The February 23rd, 2022 will begin with the budget lead instead of fighting.
Good evening, citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And cause me the order in the roll call. Mr. Saraceni here. Ms. Marsette.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McManaman.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. McCray. Mr. Willard.
Here.
Mr. Dolly.
Here.
Mr. Malisaka. Okay. Um, we have approval of previous meeting minutes. I'm sorry, of the form. Really not trying to annoy you. It's an honest mistake. Rita Shaffer.
Yes, sir.
Just come on up and give her your name and address for the reporters.
Don't forget me, I'm very nervous.
Don't be nervous, we're... We can tell you all that very easily.
Good, because I used to too. Okay, Rita Shaffer. I live at 618 Woodland Avenue, Sparkhorn. Okay. Um, my husband recently was unable to be here today, sorry. Good evening, members of the board. My family and I live at 618 Woodland Avenue, behind Grace Park School, where we have been residents for 20 years. Approximately 10 years ago, uh, my husband had some correspondence with Charles Mears about the pruning of trees across the street from our house that constantly drop sweet gum balls, or what are affectionately known as monkey balls. Needless to say, in addition to littering the street, uh, the park where the owner's so-sack of practice at my front lawn, they cause a walking hazard for the kids and parents that go to and from school during pickup and drop off time. Shortly after this request, a tree surgeon pruned the trees, which temporarily lessen the amount of litter from the aforementioned growth. However, since then, the trees have continued to grow and the gangly manner of droppings have increased. If these trees have no redeeming curb appeal or memorial value, would the township kind... Council, I'm sorry, township kindly consider having them cut down, stop, thus eliminating this annual inconvenience? Please advise and thank you for your consideration. Rita Shaffer, here.
Thank you. Usually, usually, uh, we can't, when people take down trees, that's good day. But what we can do is we can have correspondents with the school district, talk to them about any concerns, if they can turn them back, let us look at it and, you know, if we can persuade them to take them and then replace them with other trees instead of that. Maybe, uh, we have some, um, places available, come available for tree fogs, or, you know, we have tried to use some of these spaces with trees that were planted, maybe we can help replace them.
Okay.
We'll approach that first and see what we can do.
Okay, um, I would just like to leave this with you. My husband took some pictures.
Absolutely.
We have...
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Those trees are...
Oh, please, please. Now, I, you know, this is going back when my daughter was in grades, uh, going to kindergarten. I'm walking down the, walk with her, and I fell. My daughter didn't even realize it. Um, all of a sudden, she, "Mom, mom." Cut up. I mean, I was, it was a mess.
Because you just hit them in the sleep.
And then they're all over the street, and my, my husband just cleaned them up yesterday. Because why did I bother cleaning the window again, and they're all gonna fall again?
I had one, I had to take it down, whether it was in the gutters, they were, they were all on my place.
I mean, luckily, they're across the street, uh, yeah, they're across the street. They're not on our property, but still they...
We can't make them do it.
No, I understand, I understand.
So I don't want it to develop, maybe to take them, if you do it, but I'm sure we can resolve it.
All right, well, thank you so much for your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're great, Rita.
Thank you.
Bill and Melissa, I can't see the, uh... Martucci.
Yeah.
Here's your name and, uh, address for the report.
Uh, the address is 313 Woodland Circle in Woodland. Um, we've been residents, uh, there since 2007. Um, and over the years, we have had our vehicles hit parked during the night approximately six times, uh, mostly just minor damage from, uh, the, the mirror, but other minor body damage. Uh, it was all resulting from people leaving Hunts Tavern. Um, and none of those parties were ever caught, so that was basically us having, you know, to file things through our own insurance company. Our neighbors, I'm speaking for our neighbors also, on the west end of Woodland Circle have also been hit several times, they've had cars totaled. I'm not sure, you know, if they ever got resolution with their insurance companies from the other party, or if they just, you know, was hit run every time. But most recently, since the middle of, between the middle of November and the middle of January, our vehicles and our next door neighbor's vehicles were hit five times. Two of the cars were totaled completely. Uh, the other three hits were just minor damages. Um, the two, uh, that was two accidents, two separate accidents that involved five cars, um, or three separate accidents, I'm sorry, um, involving our cars to be hit. One of the occasions was just our vehicle. The second occasion was both of our vehicles and our neighbor's vehicle, and then the third incident was our neighbor's wife's vehicle. Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
All right.
Um...
I've heard about this.
Right, right, and those, those parties from those accidents, except for the last one involving my husband's wife's vehicle, those parties were caught because their vehicles were, were abandoned because they were undrivable after hitting our vehicles. Um, so we did get, you know, somewhere with the insurance companies not having that out-of-pocket cost for, you know...
Somebody made me aware of it last month, and I know, uh, Captain Doggery's in the back. I talked to Lieutenant Smith on it, and he pulled up a couple of reports to see what was going on, and I don't realize there was as many as...
Right, right, and, yeah, over the years...
Like, it was like, two, like, the last month or something, Jim. So, maybe we can get with him and see what we can do to...
Right, yeah, we, we've all gotten together and talked about needing speed bumps, not just necessarily in a part of the circle, but the entire way around the circle, because, you know, they would need to slow down the entire way around...
Why are you even going there?
Well, right, but I'm not sure what else would be able to be done, that was just, you know, the best...
Do not intervene. Well, let's look at it, I, I get it, um...
Right, it's just very frustrating, you know, especially when, you know, we, you wake up in the morning and you have no idea how to hit your car, and, you know, you're, you're having to pay for that out of pocket.
We had the police look at it last month, let's, let's look at it and see if we can, I don't want any inconvenience, the neighbors who actually live there, but we gotta do something. But, but, Jim, with the month with. Okay, guys?
Yeah.
Captain?
Take a look at us.
Because I think what, whoever the name was, I think, um, the name, police come down and talk to you, like, uh, any of our police department.
Um, at the time of the accidents.
No, I mean, like, in the last, uh, since last month.
No.
Maybe with somebody else.
See, what, what's happening is, there's no parking for that bar, so they're parking in the neighborhood.
Parking on the street.
And they're coming out drunk, and they're whipping around this, this turn, and they're side-swiping cars all the way around. It's like every two weeks, a car's getting swiped. And they shouldn't even be parking in there. Yeah, I, I believe, I talked to somebody, they were told to park in the shopping center across the street.
Yeah, uh, probably, but, you know, when people come to a, a place, they park on the street, we can make...
And they're coming out drunk, and then they're...
Coming out drunk, and that's why they're...
They're whipping around that turn.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
But we get with the captain here, the lieutenant, and let's look at it too, we can come up with... Kind of shut down.
Do you, do you...
I don't know, we can touch, touch it.
Oh, sorry.
Don't, don't, right now, just get on your hands, just before you leave.
Oh, okay.
Put it on your hand.
Give it to the, uh...
Give it to the captain.
Thank you.
Okay, and then us, uh... Charles always trying to get the girls along. I watch the quiet engineers.
It's on record.
Do a lot of, do a lot of the residents park on the street? Yes, uh, three quarters of the residents don't have driveways, so we have to park, or there's shared driveways and you can't park in... Sure. I just, okay, thank you.
We'll get with you with the next couple of weeks. Anyone else from public forum? Okay, thank you. Uh, we have approval of previous meeting minutes, December 15th, 2021, January 3rd, 2022, and January 26th, 2022.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, sing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Management report anything this month?
No, I have nothing, Mr. President.
Recycle report, Mr. Saunders.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, trash collected in January was 1,146 tons. Recycling collected in January was 202 tons. We've collected ATVs and monitors in January through our television monitor recycling program. More information on this program is available on the township website at www.bridleytownship.TWP.org. Just letting you know, on January, uh, we're still getting money on the recycling, so we're getting like, uh, eight bucks a ton, I believe, uh, on that, so, uh, if we can hike up those, uh, recycling numbers to get more tonnage, we get more money. So just, uh, just an FYI for everybody. I'd say, Mr. President.
Control's report, David's report.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Sources report, Mr. Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, have a, there's a tax assessment to be filed by a taxpayer for 90 grand a lab in Woodland, PA. That's, um, consists of like six relevant units, and, uh, it's volume number 38020166301. There was a negotiated settlement in this matter, the assessed value was set by the county at $451,790. There was a settlement in this amount for $353,500. He, um, it was agreed, this settlement would result in a reduction of $536.94 in taxes from the township for 2021. The settlement was approved by the Ridley Board of School Directors on February 7th, 2022. So we need a motion for the approval, the settlement authorization from the signed stipulation that fixes the assessed value at $353,500 for 2021.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any question on the motion? All those in favor, sing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
You propose? Motion carried. Uh, engineers report, Mr. Goodt, I get you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assistant, if you get to recommend approval of the, against rated communication service, the 2022 Police Radio Maintenance Contract, $3,229.01. ADU Services Incorporated, the 2022 Storm and Sanitary Source Contract, $18,648.71. ADU Services Incorporated Line Cleaning and Video Inspection Contract, $32,433.01. Inabendizio Contractors of Penn Vest Storm Improvements, $288,352.39. More Construction Services, Swatmore University Avenue Storm Source, $15,000. Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated, Keydrin and Franklin Have His Traffic Signal, $3,537.50.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any question from the motion? All those in favor, sing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have two S3s of consideration. One is Kinder Park Phase Four, $1,8,651.32, and Ralph Capazoli at 135 Brummel Street, $13,838.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any question on the motion? All those in favor, sing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have tabulation of bids to Haygarden and Sanitary Source Replacement. We opened these bids January 20th, received four bids, were in recommend award to Inabendizio Contractors, a bid amount of $122,150, subject to this lister's review and approval. The two low bids did not meet the bid specifications.
Have any motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
A series of resolutions, we could do these separately?
Yep, I think we need to.
Yeah, probably, that's, that's a quick and separate. We have a 2022 County Application to Road Reservicing Program, application to the county.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions? All those in favor, sing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution to approve the application to Penta for the traffic signals, Penta's doing a project on law make date from Bowens Lane, February 22nd. Penn Up Thorne Project on Law Mick Day from Bullens Lane, February.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution to approve a grant application to the Pennsylvania DCNR and to the DCED for now field rehabilitation phase two.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Application, resolution to approve an application to the Development Rally Regional Planning Commission under the Transportation and Community Development Initiative Grant Program to do a study of the seller's avenue corridor for a pedestrian connection.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution to make an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation, the RACE Grant Application Program. Uh, this is to look at a possibility of creating an, an alternate access road to the Marine.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can we look at this before?
This is a federal program. It's, it's been in the past that we just got noticed that this is open. It's for projects that exceed five million dollars. Look at, this is a big ticket item. This is a program that seems to fit the mold. I can tell you the chances, I think, of guys getting are, are not very good because there's, there's, what I've seen, not very many products that receive funding through it. But it's an opportunity to at least look at it. We don't apply. You know, we've, we've heard the issue.
Can we, um, couple, um, dredging in with that?
We could look, we could ask, we could look and say, you know, ask, ask, no, it's mostly for alternate transportation and so. But not to say that voting can't be an alternate transportation.
By taking a vote to work.
All right. Uh, next up, we have the Pico Green Region Grant, South Swatmore Outer Park. Just to notice that, uh, the town to receive a five thousand grand, dollar grant to plant some trees along the South Swatmore Outer Park.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
Didn't really need a motion, it was just, just for information. Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. We had it worked out. Me and him did.
Information only. Penn West project status, just let you know that, uh, they're working currently on Michelle Street. That should be done in a week or so. The second crew is working on Glen Side Avenue. That's probably two to three weeks out. And then they have a third crew going back to the jobs that have been done and doing the cleanup and restoration. Uh, they should be going after, we know that the Glen Side, we know the project will be going over to Stanbury and Armstrong Avenue. And, uh, see the light of that tunnel, that may be done by end of spring. And then finally, we have the sanitary sewer evaluation study. Uh, this is a project that was, uh, actually being done by Central Delaware County Sewer Authority. It affects certain areas of Ridley Township, particularly the Parker Avenue area. There's a section in, um, Swatmore Wood that's going to be done. Duke's Technologies is doing the work. It's going to require manual inspection, some smoke testing. They'll notify the neighborhood Friday and doing it just, just for our information that they'll be starting, uh, mid-Mars to early, uh, April. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Can you, um, check into, I have, uh, the Endemars Avenue, Jefferson, are there, like, there was a storm back in September with Trump lines, his sewer line, his trees, something. Can you take a look in that, uh, break for some of the neighbors that backed up?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, anything else, Randy, Mayor? Highway sanitation committee report, Mr. Saunders.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I could make a motion to ratify the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three sanitation truck and a two thousand twenty-three sewer truck through the PA Coast Guard Program and authorize in it, as it was authorized in the two thousand and twenty-two approved budget. I'll second the motion.
Can I second?
I'll second.
Made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
That's it, Mr. President.
Uh, Ron Orangeberry report, Mr. Beddoli.
Um, want to refer, they refer.
Yeah, this is sort of medical marijuana regulations. We're going to table this till April. Get some more information on it.
Thank you.
Need a motion to table it? Okay, just maybe take it off.
Yeah, thank you.
Recreation Committee report, Mr. McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following programs will be starting in March. So sign up for our Spring Craft Class, March seventh, fourteenth, and the twenty-first. Babysitter Training Class, March nineteenth. CPR AED Class, March twenty-sixth. Spring Basketball League, March twenty-eighth. The campus capped at ninety participants. So sign up for it. Zuma Gold Exercise Class is March first. For more information on these and other programs as well, as for online registration, go to our website at www.ridleytp.org under Parks and Recreation. Also, who would like the Ridley Township Rec Facebook page to receive upcoming summer playground and sport camps information, registration information? So once you do that, we'll be notified. That's it.
Sounds good. Okay, Public Safety Committee report, uh, there's a month, for the month of January, our police handled nine hundred and ninety-five calls. Breakdowns as follows, Crumley, one hundred and five. Folsom, two hundred and twenty-seven. Holmes, ninety-nine. Belmont Park, fifty-six. Morton, forty-eight. Ridley Park, one hundred and ten. CK, seventy-three. Stockmore, forty, and Woodland, two hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, just for, uh, January, here's a couple, just a couple of side notes. January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, Officer Sarah Howell responded to a, a Holmes residence for reported medical emergency, a subject in cardiac arrest. On police arrival, a resident was found unconscious and unresponsive. The subject was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Howell initiated CPR. There were efforts, a, a pulse was regained and the resident was transported to hospital with further treatment. Uh, that's, that's a great word. On February third, Officer, uh, Matt Rowan responded to Folsom CVS for a suspicious subject inside the store with concealed handgun, reported by employees. Officer Rowan arrived and entered the business using tactical training and positioning, making contact with the subject. He quickly and safely escorted the subject out of the store for further investigation. The investigation found the subject did possess a valid permit to carry a concealed firearm, but exercised poor judgment in handling the firearm inside the business, alarming employees while attending the mini clinic appointment. Officer Rowan's quick action safely resolved the tense situation. Uh, February seventeenth, Officer Brian Judge was dispatched to the Home Depot for retail fat. They flamed at their vehicle, reported scene leaving the area toward Wendy's. Officer Judge located the flamed vehicle and stopped it on the T Boulevard. The driver was found to be a wanted person out of Chester County. A vehicle passenger was positively identified by loss prevention employees as an actor responsible for the theft, for a piece of outdoor non-power equipment, owing a hundred thirty-nine dollars. The subject was also found to have several outstanding warrants from multiple surrounding states. The second passenger was also found to have outstanding auto warrant and possessed drug paraphernalia on her person. All three subjects were arrested and processed and charged. So, great job. You never know who you're pulling over for this first, and simple thing, and all, all these. It just shows that, yeah. They gotta be careful on every stop that they do, you know, for that one, you, right again. So, great job.
Good job.
Good job. As usual. Health Code Committee report, Sir Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of Janu- January, we had a hundred, a hundred and forty-two permits issued, sixteen contractors registered, forty certificates of occupancy issued, five rental inspections, and sixteen health inspections. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, W Committee report, Mr. Saunders.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you. Library and Research Center Committee report, Mr. Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, educators from the Brandyland Zoo will visit the library on March twenty-third with a special program for children in grades K through vet. Included in the event will be reading a book, Pen do Lea by Janelle Cannon, and interaction with some very friends from the zoo. Space is limited and registration is required. In-person quizo is back on Friday, March eighteenth, at seven PM at the library. Teams of up to four adults can compete to see who wins at general interest trivia. Masks are optional. Bring your friends and your snacks and test your general knowledge. Friends of the library recently presented a check for four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars to the library for programs and museum passes. Friends ran a number of fundraisers in two thousand and twenty-one, including a hook sale and a hashtag Giddy Tuesday online event in November. More than two hundred and fifty dresses have been taken home by happy teens in the library's first prom dress giveaway. Lovely dresses are still available in the library through the end of February. All dresses and accessories are free. There were three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five visits to the library in January. Residents checked out or downloaded ten thousand, eight hundred and fourteen books and other materials. Program attendance was one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven for children's, teen, adult classes and activities. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website, www.ridleylibrary.org. Thank you.
Great. And I saw it on social media with the dress. I think that's a great idea for kids.
It was wonderful. Thank you. A lot of people were very appreciative.
Right, how many times you sit in the closet and they wear it once and then that's it, then you throw it out.
Steve, they've been dropping.
Extra, extra call. A lot of people. That's it. I was like going to comment. I didn't think of it. A great job. Okay, all new business, so.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Friday's committee report. I didn't want to pay, I didn't want to pay. I didn't want to pay any bills this morning. Marsette.
All the commissioners have received the list of this month's fills and I'd like to make a motion for approval subject to the controller's regret.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Keep forgetting to do it, nobody on the front. Okay.
Still not.
Still not, you're in the last minute. Saunders, Amy.
I'm going, all good. Nope. I'm good.
No?
Of course, I, of course.
Okay. Sorry.
Mike's not here, so you guys.
Better not be for legal.
Wow. Damn. Swatmore Wood AA has their sign-ups for baseball and for girls' softball until the twenty-eighth. So you can go to the clubhouse or you can go to the baseball page, Swatmore Wood AA, and click the link there to register your children for baseball and softball.
Okay. Sounds good. Any motion, Gilmore Jarrett?
So, me.
Any motion? Thank you.